Is the Milbrook Community Partnership, Mr. Thorne, Mr. Whalen. Here to give us an overview of the purpose, sort of goal and. And how it impacts the district or could impact the district as well as the community as a whole. So. Yeah. And by the way, I thank you so much for taking the time. I think this has a real potential for the district.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. I'm going to say we, we opened this at the beginning of a lot of dialogue and. The, I thought I started this in the early, what I was going to say, now if I'm bad, then if I have said it well. We first of all, add me on the school camp, but. And this is not meant to be a feedback for tonight. It's kind of an overview of the project that we prepared. Um, the history of the project, building, all the programs, you know, the ad in the building, et cetera. So. Kind of a backgrounder, I may refer to some pages in there from time to time, that's to Orion, it's on particular. Um, so I'm going to go over the process we followed today. Um, limited on our mission being a breaking focus. Um, and then get into a timeline and sort of where we've come from, where we are. And where we're going, what the timing is. So just to manage everybody's expectations. And finally, I get into some of the programming that we have discussed in here that I think is particularly appropriate. So, um. Let me get into the process so far. This started all in twenty seventeen and then there Rod Brown. Raised Thorn Building as an issue that the village really needed to deal with. And he convened a small workshop of people. There were clergy, um, town officials. He had, um, you know, us from the tribute garden, he had arts groups, et cetera. And there were about ten or twelve people in that group. And we met, um, for about five meetings and sort of decided, you know, we needed to do something with this building and save it. Because it's a beautiful building. Uh, and that there were just a lot of needs in the community that weren't being satisfied that perhaps we could. Use the building for and other ways to actually really enhance the cultural life and civic life. Of what I'll call central Douglas County, um, you know, it was a beautiful facility. So. The idea that came out of there from the five oh one C three nonprofit organization. That would, um, ultimately acquire the building from the village to avoid leaving the taxpayers a big responsibility. Uh, that that entity would run a process of. Uh, and potential other programming ideas. And so that was a group name, the planning committee, thirteen members. Um, and they hired a consultant who does a lot of projects like that and come in and help us. We had, uh. The three large public meetings that time and one. The consultant also spoke with all segments of the community. So we really went out to try and learn a lot. Um, the committee, um, and, and by the way, we had representation on that committee of the central school district. Bob and Ab, who was retired that time, but had been superintendent of the school district. Uh, was a real interface to the district at the time. And so we saw a lot of input here upon the program as well. Um, so the committee came back with its recommendations, which not surprisingly, where the building ought to be renovated. That we really ought to take advantage of this auditorium for performing arts and film and video and the like. Um, that we needed a, um, a, a technology center. And, and that was really driven out of the school district at the time. That it was felt that, you know, we have the digital divide developing in this country and that if there were ways we could offer, offer. Uh, technology training that perhaps the school couldn't offer and the, the resources offered in particular time that we can bridge that. Um, there's a, a need for event space, meeting space, uh, which is. We'll facilitate it. We'll talk about programming later, but for the community working center. Uh, for our art display gallery space, um. Uh, there was a need for culinary center for teaching cooking classes and the like and providing a resource for people engaged in the farm to table. Uh, movement. Um, we heard from music instructors that they didn't have room at their homes anymore. You know, to give actual instruction. Uh, there was no place for kids to practice. Uh, and no place for kids to, you know, record what they had practiced and learn from that and, and, uh, you know. Perfect their, their, their instruments or whatever. So all these things drove, uh, the programming that building, which ultimately. Uh, drove the, the, what we call the conceptual design, which is where it stands today. We've got a, you know, a basic plan for what goes in deep for. And we'll touch on some of that. So, uh, where we stand today is, uh. That committee report was accepted. We had to go through a lot of legal gyrations to actually get title cleared. The Thorn family had a reversing clause in the deed that said if it stopped being used for education or un. Or used for un-Christian purposes, it would be returned to the family. Quite an effort to get that cleared. The court case took a couple of years. We had to get all the descendants of the family over the country to agree to this, which they finally did. Et cetera. But anyhow, we managed to ultimately acquire the building from the village. Uh, for the grand total of a buck. Uh, we got zoning clearance to build a beauty center there. Um, and we now have a conceptual design. So where we are today is, um. Is, uh, we're in fundraising phase. We have not announced a public campaign yet. Sure. What they call a quiet phase. And that is trying to get people who have. Lots of resources to commit large dollars to this program. And you know, I think we're having a great deal of success there. We'll probably come out with a. A public campaign, uh, in the spring. I mean, I can roll. Have goals and matching funds and raising events and all that stuff. So, but we're making good, good, good progress. Um, the next, uh, what we want to do is when we, when we, um. Get to a certain stage in this, what we'll call quiet phase, we'll go public. But we'll also, uh, then start construction blocks. And at that point, we'll probably seek a lot more input on the fine tuning of the design that we have today. Um, the construction guys will be here, take us most of the next summer or so. Uh, we hope to get those done and go to bed. Fall. And then start construction in early twenty four. Okay, figure. Two years of construction, though we're talking, you know, early twenty sixish or sometime around there for. For actually opening the building for, for, for people to come and, and, and work and play, et cetera. So that, um. The reason I want to tell you that, it's like, we don't need to worry about details programming tonight. Hope you've got time. Uh, we're planning to hire, uh. An executive director to run the day to day operations, uh, probably mid year next year, that timeframe. Um, and that's the person who ultimately, you know, would be the person working with the school district and developing the programming that. That the, the school district would find a helpful. So again, just to manage expectation, just when your real dialogues. Uh, can start. Um, so that is, uh, the timeline. Any questions on that?
Well, is it just the, the building or is it the, the, um, band shell or that next building? I forget what that one's called. Where the, yeah, W A used to be.
The F W is still there.
Okay.
Um, that was the shop for the old, um, school. See pictures in those deck of, you know, kids' birdhouses, you know, all their problems playing the birdhouses they built shop. Um, and, uh, uh, that's not, um, uh, in here. Um, we, we have a number of people coming to us with ideas for programming they'd like to see in that space. And we'll do something to it. But we also have to be sensitive. We need the F W, uh, in there. There aren't that many members of the F W left. Maybe we stop them. Space in the building when they need it and then be able to occupy that space. So. Um, but we need to, you know, we need to take care of the F W and that will work out.
Uh, is it the band shell as well? I, I, is that all one property?
Yeah, that's all one property, as is the playground that's up there. Um, so our site plan and we'll, uh, start sharing all this pretty publicly, relatively soon. We'll probably have another public meeting next year for Florida guests. The site plan, um, uh. We'll, we'll leave the band shell, but we have another one somewhere. I went down on Bennett. It's really good ground down there. Um, there will be a small, ultimately a smaller band shell. Still, we think there might be events. Or would like to have outdoor music on the big lawn. So that we'll still have some sort of band. The, the playground is going to move a little bit. It could still be there because there's two schools that are in the church needed and they have permission to use it. So a lot of that. That commitment. Um, there will be more parking around the building. Parking is going to be a big issue. So some of that lawn will be used for parking as well. Uh, so that's, that's all that property. And that's the basic idea.
And that's why I think it's important that we find a way to stay engaged with you because. One of the best conferences I ever went to was the Milbrook Jazz Band played at that band shell. And it was, it was phenomenal. I think it's gotta be eight, nine years ago now. It was unbelievable how good they were, how good it sounded. And it involved the community instead of just. Then don't take this, but instead of just parents, it had everybody there. It was a really good opportunity. The other thing too is. So that we stay engaged, these things have changed dramatically, like esports. I mean, I don't think five years ago we were even talking about esports. Now we've got an esports team. If there's, instead of recreating, you know, or duplicating spaces. The more we can work with you on and making, finding ways that we can integrate the district into that, I think it'll help.
Well, that's a particularly appropriate example, which I think we originally designed with conceptual designs. We, uh, we wanted to attract to that. Uh, and we had this idea around the gaming facility there, kind of being the honey with food, the feed bin, and then also. Having a technology classroom, which is, which is running here. There's where there could be instruct. So, you know, there are, you know, areas of. Coding or other technology, if I'm challenging the handle of the stewardess, you can assist if you think will be with some other officers. Also being fairly adept with my own iPad, where actually I'd love to have six smart kids up there so that I can get help. And I think a lot of seniors, you know, both the same desire, that you can bring the age groups together to have. Younger technology, kids helping seniors with things. Uh, on the, on the band show, we're never, we're not going to have a situation where there's no. Okay. Um, the Bennett Park, we're not here to talk about the money. We had faster than the dent bill. Be here to do, that the dorm building. Right, um. The, not in the early phases, but later phases of that, like have a really nice band show. And, you know, we're not like that in a way because we walk down there from the door. And anyway, there'll be a lot of parking down there. We've got good space for that. Um, so, uh, we think we could have a really nice facility down there to do the same thing we was talking about, the jazz camp. And because we want to have, um, partnerships with a lot of different performing arts organizations, so drama. Dance, theater and music, um. We think it'd be good to have indoor and outsourced spaces, you know, so we can. You know, you have something scheduled and the, the park and arrange, well, you can have the dorm building by some person. And also. Give us a way to attract some arts organizations to apply code venues, depending on time of use.
And logistically, how, how, you know, as, as things get more set on programs. Do you guys envision a? Director of the facility that we would go to with. We'd like to do this or we'd like to do that, but we need these things. Is that how that, that you envision this moving forward?
Yeah, there will be. We set an operating budget that's, um, you know, a bit of a top of the dark at the time, but it's about. Million dollar budget and an analyst staff of four or five and, um. That would be running the facility and running different aspects of, of programming or partners with other organizations that are providing. You know, we'll start with the director and that'll be. I would guess, you know, we're targeted in the middle of next year. Let's see how that, that goes. Um, we've got a problem started early. And that would be the person we'd initially be working with. Uh, in a kind of looking at our design, you know, saying, you know. Really need this. We've already got that or whatever, um, you know, if we thought about this or that feature. Whatever the facility space might be. Um, so. Uh, that would be the beginning and then talking about, you know, what, what do you need? Uh, in the community that you, that you might provide at school district level that we could augment, you know, what we. Mainly. And I, I, I wanted to, you know. Really say that something is very important to us. Is that, you know, all programming down there has some educational aspect. So if we've got a theater group who's coming in, they're going to be doing a show for a couple of weeks. We want to have them have, you know, offer to the schools that they can bring some kids in for programs, you know. The same with dance program or, you know, music. Um, you know, we will have little film festivals or whatever. We can have some of those aimed at different age groups. Um, parents or however, you know. Some for teens, whatever it may be. Um, uh, you know, the culinary is maybe a little more challenging with students, but you know, maybe there might be something would be interested as well. Uh, the, what we call a rework center, but you know, we don't really use that word too much or get it suited for trademark protection. So public community works there. Um, you know, there could, that's going to be a great place for people to come and. Working out of their homes now would be a place with a prayer and a lot of wifi or whatever, but you know, that could be used to. Certain types of projects. So, you know, we, we want to work in there with historical society. They have displays of their great collection. We've got gallery space. So, but if we get it, you know, the school group should be brought in. So all that. We view as opportunity department.
Yeah, I mean, we can't. Keep up with, you know, wouldn't it be great if we had a conference room that was big enough to do this and this in it? That will probably use once a year if that, I mean, we can't make those investments, but if there's a place where. It's like we work that we could actually use a conference room or a conference center. Or whatever that I think, making sure that we have. Some sort of planning group that's integrated with. The director of that facility so that we're thinking about it as we're putting it in the budget. If we can spend it there, we'd spend it here. Um, very good.
Yeah. The one thing I can absolutely assure you of, zero G moment for conference. If, if we're oversupplied with anything in this facility, it's conference room. It's, uh, I don't know if you've all been in the building before. We'd have to walk you around sometime. Um, on the second floor, there's a, a huge space on the south side of the building. It used to be three separate classrooms. We take the walls off. It's all one big open space today. Um, the idea is actually have that be a dance studio for dance company. You know, like make their residency or whatever, but it can also be divided into three different rooms and divided across and all the booths could be separate, uh, conference rooms. The whole thing wide open. Then we're going to have this, uh, the plan any hours have this, um. You know, really connected conference rooms. If you want to have people at another location, you've got big screens and you could all be on the TV and. Whiteboarding together and that kind of thing. Because the community doesn't have anything like that. And so. That's just a sampling of the overabundance of consciousness thing we, what these people have.
I just remember the theater from even back of all the Boy Scout stuff was there when they moved up and got their eagles and. The, the, uh, haunted house that was downstairs. I mean. So a lot of time in there. And the electric can still be in there, you know. Very good.
So that, that's what takes us through timeline. We can pop into this a little bit. Add a, an artist who's rendering some of the. Some video of the rooms and I'm just going to look under the. Maybe page three is where the mission. The history of the Thorn Building. What your predecessor's made and it's pretty fun. A few interesting fun pictures. There's the home act class on the upper right. They only had, you know, girls in those classes back then and, you can see in that kitchen still there. And the down below are the boys, I believe, with their birdhouse was coming out of that building. You were asking. Little history of the project, which I basically given you. These are plans talked about. You're interested in the funding, the management, governance, et cetera, things on that. But I wanted to go into some of them. You go into the actual facilities. Part of our set on page eight. Um. Little detail on that. We're going to plan and, you know, soon as we get the funding, we'll be to move that wall. From the north side back about fifteen feet. That'll make that stage. Um, you know, bigger than most high school stages and, and being a, or, or a regional theater company or something like that. So the idea is to. Hopefully get interest from that kind of organization come in ballet, the same thing. Um, and music as well, but it'll have a screen that comes down and the cards. Or projection. So, uh, you know, live video. Um, uh, projection of, you know, we've had an interesting, we're going to follow them off for a live on Monday, Wednesday night. Might be, but it could be also aimed at, uh, programming for, for school aged kids and, and some movies. Um, and of course, that will also be good for film. Um, there's a lot of detail in here about what we'll be doing with that. That rooms of vanity, it's a whole bunch of other things. There'll be a real projection studio, I mean, uh. Projection room built in the back. And, uh. The next is the culinary center and I won't get into a lot of detail, but, um. You can see it's got screens set up in it and, and so, you know, you could take a cooking class in Paris or you could take one in New York. May have your choice, uh, because it'll be able to have remotely hosted, uh, instruction. The next one is more interesting here. I would think this is the tech center in, um. And this, um, design, you know, it's a maybe a little artistic, but this is kind of the design is probably an area we could use a lot of help in. Thinking through how it's, uh, put together. Um, and, uh, and the exact type of programming offered. That, that can really duck, you know, but you won't be confused. And so that one in particular excites me. I don't think we have a picture of the gaming. I don't think any artists would be old enough to want to try and do that, but, uh, it's right next door and it's, um. The idea would be in that big screen, you know. Cloudy seats and kids could hang out in and sit in and, and play games with each other in the world today. We'll also have, we have a little desk out in front of this area just so that somebody can keep an eye on that. Of an adult age, but of a vintage where they can understand what the kids are doing. Um, uh, that's, uh, that, it gets into the gallery space next. And then the dance studio and the bedroom upstairs. But I'm working for it to use. The community workspace on thirteen. And then the music studio, recording studio on page fourteen, I think is another area that could attract a lot of, uh, two age kids. You know, those that are interested in music. They have the ability that you, I don't know if you haven't, so you record music here or not.
I think we have small scale for recording programs like.
So never be practice rooms. And then this idea is to have a kind of a hangout room on the outside here where you can all talk about. We will have this, the top of the building has this extraordinary old room. Um, with this skylight. And the, the light's unbelievable. And every time an artist gets up there, uh. So that will be for art construction. And, uh. Again, that's a place to cooperate with you all and offer some instructions. Especially if we had an artist residence program or something like that. Um, uh, you know, that would give the school the ability to bring kids over who rich didn't art and expose them. The, the garden isn't too big a deal for a school age kids, but it does, it will have wifi. And you can have groups that work outside and, and sort of hang out out there and do the work. So group work projects or whatever. Yeah, there's a lot of other aspects of the building we put on page seventeen, um. You know, the, the, the front entrance, there will be a big lobby with, uh. You know, again, places that people can hang out and sit and do their email or hang out in small groups. Um, we don't want to compete with the local restaurants, so we're not going to be selling coffee there, but there probably some coffee like. You know, drinks available or whatever. Kiosk, you know. And then our, our plan is to have a lot of bandwidth throughout the building. So the, the people that might have, uh, limited access to really strong wifi would be able to go up there. Um, so we'll have a. Existing fiber feed, you know, we may have a couple of Starlink antennas on the top to bring you an extra capacity. But we want people who really feel like they can go there and sit anywhere and get online and, and then do that securely as well as. That's kind of it. At the outside. Let's see, if you go back to the front. Okay, you see that there's kind of a canopy where that portico there is today. And, uh, and that's actually, you know, it'll also create this scenario that kids can hang out in, in anything you can, but. You ever go to New York and you go to Fifth Avenue by Metropolitan Museum of Art, they've got these great stairs to go up and. There's always hundreds of people hanging out on those. And doing whatever. But we wanted to make this building kind of be, be very inviting for people to come in. Um, and that stairway to have be a place where people can hang out on the side. Enjoy. Well, that's, that's sort of the programming aspect.
Any questions? Anybody? I, I appreciate you guys coming in because this, I mean, the more we can do. What we're trying to do with Milbrook is make it recognizable around the country as, you know, a top hot school. A, a place that you want to like be feed into. Um, and the more we can do to show. That we've got a program that expands beyond just the school campuses. And, and has unique offering, the better we're going to be. Um, so I, I appreciate you coming in and spending the time with us to take us through this. And, uh. When do you think? Outlet? Would be a good time for us to basically engage on a more formal level.
Well. You can always reach out, especially if you're trying to make a decision about. Something that's a budgeting matter of importance to you, you're trying to make payoffs and, 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 um, and our board would be happy to talk with you then if you have that kind of issue. The, the funding pressing, you know. Um, I think that, um, like I said, probably middle of next year is when we'll have the executive director on board. If, if it's sooner than that, we can start talking soon. I, I would invite you to maybe do two things though, or maybe combine, which is we could do a tour of the building with you as well. Uh, because the plans are in there, much more in the auditorium, I think, if you want to see what the plans look like in the conceptual stage. Um, and also, you know, see the space. It's, uh. Uh, it's funny because I, I've been in there, but it looks like not so great over the years, not, not in a big. And now I've been, I've been given this horse so many times that I, I've kind of, you know, I've really fallen in love with the building. It's, it's incredibly cool space. And, uh, to get the asbestos out, we had to actually take the plaster off all the walls. So now all these walls that were kind of dirty, grungy looking, and now they're all exposed brick and they would break. But we didn't know we had that feature. So it's, it's good. And, and we've taken a number of the walls out that will be. So it's it's good and and we've taken a number of the walls out that we've taken, we haven't taken them off. So it's worth a tour and we'd be happy to to set that up. Uh, sometimes the whole board and come.
And you're gonna keep the little ticket booth as a door then?
Gotta keep.
I love that.
Gotta keep the ticket booth. We don't know what it was, because. That was a school, that was original in the building. I I have a feeling, but I don't know, there's somebody there checking off who showed up.
But it really, it looks like a thing you put in two bucks, you get a ticket out and then you go. Very good, thank you, anything else?
Incredible.
Appreciate it, appreciate it, thank you, thank you. All right. All right. All right, next on the agenda is. Oh, Friends of the Gazebo. So.
Okay, so we are part two tonight, and I thank the Board of Education for hosting us tonight, I know you have many other. Things that you need to discuss, so we'll try to keep our presentation brief. We do have two presenters tonight, myself and Patrick Wang, who will present in a few moments. So I want to just introduce myself before we begin, my name is Wayne Leinca, I do live in the village of Milbrook. I am an art historian, a museum professional, and I teach art history at a local college. And I'm also a very proud graduate of Milbrook High School, so. Tell you that also. I have to tell you that this project. Raising funds to restore the gazebo has really brought the Milbrook community together. Yes, the Thorn presentation about the Thorn Building is really important. And it has generated a lot of community interest, but I have to say from the grassroots level. The Friends of the Gazebo has really. Brought the community together to save a very small but very important structure to the village. So we're saving a purpose. Is on the screen there, I'm not going to read it for you because I always find it sort of. Noyed when someone projects video on the screen and then reads it to you like you can't read, so. I'm gonna let you read that presentation, but we'll go on, we work on. We are under the guidance of the Milbrook Historical Society, so therefore we use their five oh ones, the three nonprofit status, which is important. For us as we are not standalone. But the gazebo does matter and I'll tell you a little bit more about that as we go on, but. Again, it's been a very important structure for. Probably over a hundred years to the Milbrook community. So we're gonna talk a little bit more about now the background of the gazebo and I'm. Patrick Wang, who is our historian. Give some important information and wrote a really great book.
Thank you, thank you so much, thank you so much for coming tonight. I'm located and also a proud graduate of Milbrook. I'll just give a little brief background on James Ware, the architect. He designed the gazebo, that's why I said. Thanks to Milbrook. And also town country architecture, James Ware, his sons. Detailing our architect, responsible for so much of Milbrook's love. And I'll read a brief statement about. James Ware is the New York City architect who designed the inside gazebo and the majority of Milbrook's distinctive interior. He was New York City's preeminent designer of model tenements as well as New York's first modern army. The world's first fireproof warehouse and was considered to be the pivotal forerunner of the modern skyscraper. The Osborne Apartments on West Fifty Seventh Street. Which was built to be the tallest building in the world in eighteen eighty. The Osborne is also only the second luxury apartment building in New York after the Dakota. Its enchanting lobby is recognized as the most opulent apartment entrance in all of the city of the neighborhood. James Ware also is identified with the early employment of Queen Anne style in America. Credited as being only the third architect in America and just the second in New York who worked in the Queen Anne style. Which is derived from English. And typified by ponderance and gables, towers and wide variety of decorative surface and picturesque features that have come to be known as Victorian broadly designed. James Ware's transformation of the physical identity of Milbrook aimed via his role as essentially the court architect or the innovative industrialist that established their country estates here in the eighteen nineties. Practically encasing the village. In addition to the multitude of mansions with their often fantasy inspired outbuildings. Harns, gatehouses and garden vases, the ware firm also designed dozens of village residences. As well as church parrot halls, stores, schools and municipal buildings throughout Milbrook. Among his recognized masterpieces here was the recently demolished Halton Hall. Which he later converted to the former Benedict College. As impressive for more is Ware's Mohawk Mountain House in nearby New Ponce. Acknowledged as a direct inspiration in concept and design for Walt Disney's Queen. Milbrook's Victorian architecture, as typified by Ware's Elm Drive gazebo, represents very high pedigree of the Queen Anne style. The gazebo's distinctive pearly near spandles. Alternated with decorative lattice wood. Acorn corbelled trim, conical root and copper chenille are quintessential ware Manhattan. From the early wave of architects inspired estate and residential wood in Milbrook from the eighteen nineties. Built along with a nearby shingle house designed by Ware in the early eighteen nineties. The gazebo predates the extension of elm and maple drongs. As well as the replaced eighteen nineties school likely altered by Ware. As well as the YMCA which is down the village hall. It's also the architect's final building in. The gazebo has been widely regarded as an integral part of all of these Milbrook institutions, Varisley and their later incarnations. It also separately distinguished itself as an iconic ornament in the community for one hundred and thirty years despite its later and current decline. James Ware's prolific work throughout Milbrook manifested as a conscious ensemble. Of which his picturesque gazebo is a historic and considered artistic asset. As a unique historic resource acceptable acceptable to the public. Ware's Queen Anne gazebo is a worthy and useful object of historic preservation for the benefit of the community and Milbrook's future change. And I'd like to leave my statement as well to the book, the board. And again, any questions? Of this word, aspects of Ware.
Thank you for being here. So I saw in the, I said, it believed that James Ware designed gazebo, this is their doubt that maybe. He did anything, there's less similarities in his architecture, but is it something that is being acted as this was designed by him, is it something that? Has some doubt to it?
It's almost assuredly by James Ware, I've studied the architect. Going now almost forty years now. My mistake, my entire. You can see. For instance, on the photos there, you see certain aspects to other architecture in Milbrook that matches identical. To where such as the curved linear spandles, the use of lattice work as decorative bill and train. You can see on several houses here, one in the Ditch Estate, another one is on Church Street. As well as. Throughout the Mohawk Mountains as well, you see identicals of curvilinear spandrel work as such. Particularly on the Swiss. Shaolin that parts of the lake. But yeah, it is almost certainly is by James Ware. He was the only architect working here in the village until a Thorn Building in eighteen ninety. Which was designed by Poughkeepsie. But other than that, James Ware has been up Milbrook of the time and pretty much everything over there. So yeah, it is, to answer your question, it is it is most certainly.
So Elliot, I mean. No matter what, even if it was. You know, a square box out in the field someplace. For us to do something with it. We have to follow the law. So what do we have to do, because it can't stay there the way it is. It's going to fall down, someone's gonna get hurt. It it's just, it's a mess. I know if we're going to do a capital, what we would consider a capital project, but to put it out to the for the voters. So what what do we have to do? Because we'll get, come back to like, how are they doing with funding and those things? But what's, what, how do we go about doing something like this?
So. Thank you all for coming and sharing your information with us, it's really, we still have some more.
Do you wanna? You wanna keep going and we'll?
I think we should, maybe we can address your question later if you don't mind.
Yeah.
But I mean, any other architectural. Historic questions for Patrick? So let's, let's continue. Fortunately, I don't have my glasses for long distance tonight, so it's kind of bad, I've had a loss here. But. The community really got together and this is going to be the core of this presentation tonight, especially when. Community received a letter, I believe, from the Milbrook Board of Education asking the community, what should we do with this structure? And that really generated a lot of interest. Because, you know, I thought back very quickly to Joni Mitchell's song, The Big Yellow Tack for nineteen seventy and the opening line is. So they paved paradise and purple parking lot, now you might remember that song. And that stuck in my mind because we did not as village residents want that gazebo to be torn down. For a parking lot, because that's been one of the unfortunate things that has happened in the village of Milbrook, beginning in the late nineteen sixties and early nineteen seventies, we lost. A number of very important buildings so we could have parking lots and that was kind of. Unfortunately, the the thought process at that time in most of America, so. That letter really got a lot of people together saying, you know, we really need to do something for this structure, yes, it is beginning to fall down, yes, it is. But we don't want it to be torn down, we don't want it to be replaced with a lookalike structure because it is such an important architectural feature in the village. So in September of. Two thousand and. Twenty one, a group of very concerned citizens got together and formed the Friends of the Gazebo. Committee, which I cited under the guidance of the the Milbrook Historical Society. And the goal there was to begin to not only raise awareness, but also to raise funds. So that we could hopefully begin some type of restoration of the gazebo. We had a lot of important things that happened in the past year, our first debut into the community was our float. At the parade of lights last December, and I don't know if any of you were at the parade that night and saw the float, but. When that float came up Franklin Avenue, it got a lot of applause all along the way, because again, like I said, there are so many people in the community who. Know about the gazebo, who remember the gazebo from way back when and who want the gazebo to journey, so that was really exciting to see them. The community came together and were really applauding that. We did, our next major project was a fundraiser. Fundraiser at the Milbrook Winery where we. Had over eighty people who attended and we. We had many donations of catering, wine, silent auction items. And we raised approximately twelve thousand dollars after expenses. For that event, but you know what was really more important than raising the money for that event? Was that when that information went out to the community that we were going to sponsor a fundraiser and this was our first major one. We had so many people from all across the country who used to live in Milbrook or even people who live in Poughkeepsie now. They sent in money, they sent in words of encouragement because they were so excited that this gazebo had some attention paid to it. So that for me, and I think for the committee, was even more exciting and more important than the cash that we raised, of course, the cash was really important also, but. It was the the twenty gender among the interest among the. Our next was the. Was a porch party and the porch party was in September twenty twenty two.
Yeah.
Fifth neighbors on Elm Drive, who surround the gazebo got together. They opened up their houses, they opened up their hearts, it was a. I guess we'd call it like a progressive dinner. And people started at one house. And cocktails, live music, they moved along to the other houses, again, raising money for the gazebo, but also. Raising goodwill and bringing the community together, and I think that too is really important, that people got to meet each other because of this event too, so you see that. Our interest in preserving the gazebo grows more than, you know, preserving a very important architectural structure, it is bringing the community together and that. Is really important too, you know, because we talk about community, we're talking about community with the Thorn Building, well, this gazebo is kind of doing the same thing with this this project. Our next event that we did was Community Day at the farmer's market. And during a number of. Months when the farmer farmer's market was open, we had a table. And we asked for contributions if people wanted to contribute, we also gave out information on what we are doing to help preserve the gazebo. And the one time that I was at the at the table, it was really touching to me because this woman came in a wheelchair, a motorized wheelchair into the funnel bucket. And she stopped at the gazebo table and she said to us. You know, I've lived in Milbrook all my life, so the gazebo has been such a big part of my life, I don't have a lot of money, but I don't want to see the gazebo torn down. So she put in a few dollars for a little contribution, you know, that was so important to us. You know, because every dollar is going to happen, so that I thought was such a, such a great thing. So again, just some other events from the Milbrook Winery. Silent auction, the gazebo on Franklin Avenue in December during the parade of life. Again, some other, you can see some other views, we've had the graphics that we graphic design donated by very talented members of the community, so. Again, like I said, this is the really grassroots. And we really started with nothing. And we, I think, have progressed quite extensively with this, the the community coming together. So we do see a historic gazebo in our future and I hope you all see a historic gazebo too. Because although we don't know for sure that is why we are, we are ninety nine point one hundred percent positive. Again, given the information that Patrick shared with you about his architectural style and comparing that to the gazebo. So the gazebo, as I said, is an important historic structure in the village. It can be a staging event for small concerts and we can see small concerts happening there in the summer because there is great space around for people to sit. And originally, obviously, the gazebo was built to have concerts. And there are many long time Milbrook residents who remember sitting on the lawn. There was not a tennis court there at that point, sitting on the lawn and listening to music, and we want to bring that back to the community also. Not big concerts like the Jazz Kings at the at the band show, but like small. And combos that can play there for the community. Can be a workplace, a workspace for students, it can be a covered lunch spot, it can be a shady spot for people to stop when they're taking a walk around the village and. That would be great too, and again, just a meeting place. So it has a lot of possibilities. We've done a lot so far, given that we are a small group. We have Instagram and Facebook sites, again, that's generated a lot of interest among people who don't even live in Milbrook anymore, but remember the gazebo from when they lived in Milbrook. We had the parade of life, like I mentioned, a table at the farmer's market. Articles and local publications, our cocktail party, the Elm Drive porch party, fundraisers. And we've had a number of private donors who have contributed to us at this point. Just because they are again, very interested in saving the gazebo. Now, it's for that. So future plans for fundraising and again, obviously, you might be saying, well, you know, we've raised. Eighteen thousand dollars so far, then they didn't, we still have a lot to go. eighteen thousand dollars so far. Then, then we still have a lot to go. So what are we doing? And again, we are an active organization. The American Country Health Foundation would like to offer classes from Milbrook High School students on surveying historical structures. Um, again, but that's a whole nother issue that would be discussed with you at some point. Um, a gazebo donation box at participating neighborhood houses on Halloween. And if you live in the village of Milbrook, you know that we get thousands of people on the village street. So this could be a good small fundraiser. If people will put out a box to raise money for the gazebo. We're talking about a winter market, um, some sort of silent auction. A game night to raise money. We are researching and looking at applying for grants. Again, and one grant we're working on right now is the Stewart, um, Foundation. You know, Stewart's on Franklin Avenue, um, they foundation dedicated out money for these types of projects, small grants. But again, a lot of small grants will make our goal. Um, we are working on a direct mail campaign to not only people in the village, but then to push that out farther. And, uh, we hope if we can secure donations for building materials. But again, I know there's lots of issues that have to be discussed. So, um, as I said, we are working with the, um, the American Country Health Foundation, the nonprofit, um, organization. Um, and they hope to develop a historical structure report to us. And they're working on also getting some estimates to repair the gazebo.
But I want to go back and show some of the photos.
Yeah.
I thought the Avenue of Lights, you guys were actually just stealing the gazebo.
Well, that's true. Right, so we need to talk about this. Um, the gazebo, again, we're gonna just go through a little bit of the history. Um, the gazebo has always played such an important part in Milbrook. Certainly, all the baseball teams, I mean, Milbrook was noted for a lot of its, uh, baseball teams back in the nineteen twenties, thirties, and forties. That, they're, they were not millionaires, but they were all that. Um, they were part of the, uh, part of the cyber of the YMCA, uh, community here in Milbrook. Um, again, the great photo op always posing in front of the gazebo. We see a lot of pictures of different teams posing the gazebo in the background. There is a painting, which I think is really great, painted in the village hall. The painting in the village hall, um, it's called Game at Home, which was painted in nineteen fifty-three by Tom Leonard. Um, I've done research on Tom Leonard, and I really can't find much information. But he, it's so curious, like, who was this man, Tom Leonard? And why did he paint the scene of a baseball game or an event on the, on the YMCA grounds and include the gazebo? But again, we show you this because the gazebo in nineteen fifty-three was part of an artist's painting. Um, certainly reflections of Milbrook. You see different, um, female basketball, baseball, baseball team. Volleyball, basketball team posing in the gazebo. Again, a center of community. Well, like I said to you, and I, our, our goal here is to make you aware of the fact, not that you're not aware, but to make you aware of the fact that we do have a lot of community interest in preserving the gazebo. Not replacing it with another structure, but preserving the actual architectural features of the gazebo. Because again, as I said to you, don't let this, don't let us tear down, you know, remove paradise and put up a parking lot. Because that's not what we want. We want the gazebo to be brought back to life and to celebrate it as it once celebrated many years ago. Does anyone have any questions?
Just a, a, a comment is, you know, we're really struggling on this one. Because first of all, every dollar we spend is supposed to be in educating our students. And we can say, you know, well, we had a concert there last month, you know, like three kids played instruments. And, and maybe they, you know, a couple of kids went and painted. But it's gonna be very hard for us, especially if we have to find money to do it. It's gonna be very hard for us to say to our voters, you know, this is a key to Milbrook Central School District. With that said, I think the more you're able to, you know, collect, um, it still means that we've got to go through the process of getting SCD and probably four other acronyms, I can't remember, um, onboard with this project. And that we meet all their standards. Um, and that, that is, to be honest, that's no matter what the fate of this thing is. Um, so we have a little bit of time, um, to figure this out. But, you know, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be very difficult for us to, especially to invest money from our, our budget into that facility. Um, I mean, that, I, I know you kind of parallel that to, um, the community project. At least that I can see, you know, hey, we were gonna build these classrooms. We don't have to do that. Or we, we were gonna go down to Wapangers to go to something. We don't have to do that anymore. Um, this is gonna be very difficult. And the, the, the other key is, you know, maybe we just put it up as a separate issue, bond issue, whatever, whatever the right wording is. And then it'll come down to what is the population of Milbrook Central School District, maybe?
And the school district is larger than the village of Milbrook and the town of Washington, including several of the townships. Uh, personally, as a student of history, I would love to save it. But when you talk about reaching out toward, of, of, you, you should reach out to the entire district if we can put this thing together and try to make a point.
No, I think that's a good point. Yes, we should definitely do that.
Yeah, I don't want the perception to be to the public that we don't want to save history.
No.
And that, and that's sometimes how it feels. And it's kind of a rock and a hard place because, you know, we're looking at estimates upwards to sixty-five thousand dollars that would go on the taxpayer's shoulders to save a gazebo that, you know, it could be half the town, it could be, you know, more than. But there's a lot of red tape, as Elliot started to say before. And that's, that gets a whole nother layer of, you know, you had mentioned doing estimates and everything else. I mean, I, I don't even know if that's feasible, right? We have to. Yeah. You go right in?
Yeah, obviously, thank you all for all working with us and having cared for going my entire career. It's nice to see people actually care about, you know, restoring structures. It's great. Um, and the fact that so many of our residents are supporting over restoring district properties and past, you know, that's a feeling too. You know, and, and certainly, so from that perspective, I absolutely appreciate. It is a part of the district's real property, you know, whether it's this building or the gazebo. They have to treat it the same way when it comes to renovation and construction. So I think as far as due process, those, you know, the board has to decide if this is something we want to include in our referendum vote to May. Um, there's certainly ways we can structure it. That ensures the district from financial exposure. Um, so for example, we can have it as an alternate to a larger project. Should funding be identified and available, and we want terms of block, we can support it, we can cost estimate it. Uh, we can have the engineering, architectural, full scope of work. You know, right now, what we have is an estimation. Like I said, we got our estimate from our architects and engineers. That's what they get paid for. Um, they base it, if you remember, I want to share, nationally, they're based on square footage assessment. So when they work up those numbers, they say the structure is X minus square B. This type of work usually costs five dollars per X squared B. And so you come up with your numbers, into eight dollars. Um, my thought from a very cursory perspective would be, if, if we have so much community support for the gazebo, I'd love to see that support spread out to the district as a whole, to our package project as a whole. And perhaps that's something that we can partner on, you know, your support and our support together for this, this larger endeavor. That could be inclusive of the gazebo. And, um, should the voters approve such a project, then our next steps would be to formally scope everything down to the screws and nuts and everything that goes into it. And then once the state approves it, like Mr. Hartman said, we have to send it for architectural and engineering approvals for every aspect of it. That would come back from the state and allow us to clear out to bid. When we put it out to bid, we'll understand what the market will bear in terms of cost. And at that point, if the, the gazebo has the means to support that, the district would, you know, would be able to take a donation to help subsidize that work. So it's a little bit, you know, down the road in terms of when we can partner financially. But I, I think the important part for us right now, logistically, would be to, um, decide what, you know, we have a sixty, seventy thousand dollar estimate for a gazebo and a forty-two million dollars in need, or forty-one point seven million dollars in global needs for the district. So there's a lot of other things to consider. Uh, and, and over the next couple of months, we're gonna be working as a miniature team to identify how much of that forty million we're going to put out to the voters with the board's approval in May. And, uh, if the gazebo can be part of that, maybe the support for the gazebo can support the greater project at large. And then we can see about where we all have to make a vote.
But I think key for, for you as a group is target late January, mid. Here's what we think we've got, or here's how much we've got, here's how much more we think we can get by whenever. Because what we then have to do is, as we start in February, right, early February, to do the budget, build. So sometime in late January into, well, all the way to May, um, is build the budget time, like build a barrel of money. Um, if we can get exactly where you are, in the meantime, we figure out, you know, what it's gonna take to do this. And then if we can come up with a solution that, that, uh, passes our voter, whatever you want to call it, discretion. But that's what, I mean, that would be my recommendation, is to focus. And, and I know you guys, you know, you all have other jobs, you all have other things. But if you can put focus on the next couple of months, what can we get? You know, if it's a matter of, we got eight thousand two hundred dollars and, and we think we can get eight thousand two hundred and six. That's fine. But if you, if you think you've got a couple of plans that, that say you're gonna go from, what'd you say, sixteen, seventeen, we're gonna go, we think we can go from eighteen to twenty-five by doing five things. That's something that we should know as we build it.
Did you say by the end of February?
Uh, the, the end of January would be best, and then the end of February.
And I do vote every year, but the school vote is in June? May, okay. So we, alright, so it may would be the, if it's on the agenda. Our capital project would be a second proposition on May. Okay.
Elliot, what was the cost to actually remove?
It's only twenty thousand. And a lot of that cost was driven by the need for a basement door, some of these materials.
And I asked, I wanted to kind of give them a more specific idea. I mean, we're saying roughly sixty-five. And, you know, at the very least, we can cover what, I mean, obviously, we have to vote on that and everything else. But now you have a better idea of kind of the missing.
And we could always structure our bids to say, you know, option A, option B, we bid in both ways. We have the market value of both potential. So like, it may be wise for us to do that. Say, to all the contractors who are just, they structure down to there. And what would they charge for a full restoration? That'll really give us bookend numbers.
The other thing is, if we can, and I don't, I mean, there doesn't have to be a dissertation on this, but the safety of the current gazebo. I mean, if the thing, if I lean on it and the whole thing's going over next week, then we need to move, like, we can't wait for the capital project and all that, to figure out what to do right now. I don't think that's the case.
When we had it assessed initially, there's no fear of falling, I'll say. But we don't want anybody occupying it for some reason. And for some reason, you know, during the winter season, let's say the weather wreaks havoc on it, worst of the weeks back, the board can declare an emergency, we can take rapid action.
Okay.
You have a question?
Um, it, it was a lot settled, but my, uh, jumping into what was said earlier, um, about the use. So all these wonderful photos showed in the background. I was wondering if it was actually used, where you can go on it, how many people it would fit. Because just for example, during COVID, uh, sometimes book fair had to be outdoors. It was a rainy day. We're like, can, you know, someone's saying, can use the gazebo to fit it? It's only, can, you know, I imagine so much for capacity. And so just use for the children and thinking about how there's a tennis court right behind it. There's that area to go into the parking lot, that kind of rocky road. It is a bit of a distance from Elm Drive, Elm Drive to walk to. So it's just thinking about usage and, um, if there was anything that was specifically used for, instead of just being in the background.
Well, it was used at the baseball game, it was a concession.
Oh, okay.
The problem where it is now, though, is you got the road that comes down by Elm, which makes, so there's really no place over here to hang out. The tennis courts are over here, so there's no real place to sit on tennis courts over there. If you wanted to do something like, I don't know, two kids wanted to have a small concert there. It's hard to figure out. Plus, that road makes it, you know, especially for the Elm Drive kids, makes it a little bit of a concern.
Yeah, we have thought about that. And we also thought too that from the gazebo, um, going southeast, there is a slope that goes down. And then on the side, which is the parking lot for, I guess, the tennis courts. You know, I mean, that could be a place where chairs could be set up too. I mean, I think it's certainly possible. I understand the road. Yes, it is very close. But I think where there's a will, there's a way. And I think we could probably do, uh, you know, we could do concerts there. And this is by being creative in how we set up chairs, encourage people to bring blank.
Just to clarify, because I know it was brought up, and, and I, I do believe I remember the answer. But relocation is out of the question as far as this goes.
That was discussed. Um, our David Greenwood, the town and village historian, was against that proposal, just because, again, it would remove the gazebo from its original spot.
I'm asking the questions, since it might be someone home wondering the same thing. And, you know, just because it's disconnected from Elm, and now it's not what it used to be with the tennis courts and everything else. It's just, you know.
Well, at one time, there was discussion about moving it all the way to Bennett, um, which I think was done away with. But then there was a secondary discussion of moving it. So if you look at, you got Elm Drive School here, you got that beautiful lawn that goes out. Is there a way that it could be out here? You know, now you have, you really do have people to sit around. And would it be used with the band shell right next to it? Up until, I just heard the, I thought that band shell was moving, but I guess that won't be there too. So, um, we're gonna have a lot of band shells going.
Yeah, that's a lot. Milbrook is gonna be noted for concerts.
I hope so. I mean.
Band shell, gazebo, it's gonna be great.
Okay. Anything else from anybody?
Okay.
All right, well then, thank you very much for all your time.
Thank you for taking the time. We do appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, I'll see you.
Thank you.
If you want to say for public comment, do we say here now?
Yeah, 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 you can say it. Stay here now. This is. I think you said, I don't have a plug. Really? Yeah. I don't think that's fine. We get the most of consent. All right, uh, next up, do I have a motion on the consent? Uh, sorry. Do I have a, thank you. Do I have a, um, is there anything anybody wants to pull from the backstand? You want it pulled, or do you want it?
I just have a question. Um, there, it was pulled by time. And one of the requests was, the question was, what were the books and their new places? And the, and the reference, they took their new. Yeah, so now, um, they're not being reviewed, maybe same tax, but they're funded money throughout the years where they can collect other, okay, we're not needing to.
You don't want it pulled?
Then, um.
Okay.
Well, then I have a follow-up question.
Well, do you want it pulled, or do you want to do the question? Well, do you want it pulled or do you want to do the question, you know what I mean, we make a motion, second it.
You know what, pull it.
Okay, number, number three. Anything else anybody want to pull? Um do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Do a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any again? Uh correspondent, you got your Bozies October spotlight? Uh I really for the president's report. Yeah, you're gonna discuss.
Get it discussed the poll.
Oh, sorry, Howard. Uh yeah, alright, so why don't we uh, we have a motion to approve number three? Do a second, second.
The question is the titles, which are, which are class or work classes, work classes. Uh are they no longer being used or taught?
Yeah, so what I will say is that there's a big shift in specifically instruction of literature. Where um the class set of texts isn't really the way in which texts are taught. Um as they were traditionally, now we're using more of an approach where there are standards and skills that are being targeted. Um but we're really trying to push a book club model where students can select their own text. And be asked to do tasks that reinforce skills and standards. So it could be true that there are copies of this, it's just not full class sets of them, so students can self-select. Um one of these particular texts.
Which was the next question, are there copies of Pecilla Martinburg in our library, of at least twenty three?
Yes, I mean, as far as I know, there are still in our library.
And Lord of the Flies, obviously, okay. Alright, as long as they're available, and that's fine, then I have, I don't have.
Uh do I have a motion to accept, or no, we already did that, um all in favor? Any again? Uh president's report, just a couple of things, the um, we all know about this event, that is on Thursday. Thursday, um should be pretty, you don't have to go there, it should be pretty interesting. And uh collective bargaining is the next, I think it's the next subject of a board, which is December, I believe. So if you're interested in that piece, it's like how are, how are they doing collective bargaining across the county, across the districts? Um that's all I've got.
Is that next, next Thursday, the thing?
And they're supposed to be offering up some tours of the new Bozies. I wanna say mid-November, cuz it's being turned over to the the actual school itself, the the construction's done. Um I know they've got a bunch of stuff to do, you know, move chairs in and whatever else, but. Uh the vast majority of that project is done. Um so I'll let you know as they start to invite us. I think it'll be a good chance for you to see what Bozies is now becoming.
Chris, anything? No, other than just to thank Dean and Howard, we're going to the NISBA conference this week, Thursday, Friday and Saturday, so hopefully you can bring back some good information.
There you go. Okay, uh, Caroline?
So as I had mentioned um at last meeting, we have um posted a provisional principal account. Our position on the considerations that we had, we've been speaking discussed, that provisional agreement. Would mean that the person would have to, the exam and the next time it's offered and be reachable, otherwise we would have to. Um interview whoever is reachable on the list. Um we do have two. Um at this time, so there are some considerations that we could. Session, one of them is a current employee, um but we are moving forward with that potential provisional appointment. Um I had mentioned that last meeting also, that's um one of the things I would like to shift. Is having mentors for our newly hired administrators, just as an ongoing practice. Um we currently do have a couple and um I think, you know, we provide mentors for teachers. We try and provide mentors, you know, for other roles, and I just think it's really important for us to provide mentors um for administrators. And I'm not sure why we haven't in the past, but I will be working with Julie. Um to come forward with the proposal for that role, cuz I think that's really important. Um we have appointed Jeannie Choka into the cook manager position. So I, you know, thank Jeannie for all that she's been doing, leading the department, um and will continue to do, and this role will continue. Service manager returns, so we're happy to have this as a permanent position um here in the district, and I thank Jamie Carrick and she's done. Um and taking on this increased responsibility. For the role of supervisor of digital fluency and data privacy, we have um received one application at this time. Um congratulations to Elliot. And so we will be able to now continue to tap our connections in other districts and other organizations. Um related to this type of work and hopefully um build our applicant pool. But um at this time, we currently have one. So we really wanna make sure that there's um, you know, some competition in it and everything. Um in response to conversations that have been ongoing at the board level, um we have been doing some supervision sort of audits. Where administrators are going to um different large group areas. Um throughout the day, so the gym, we've been going to um the cafeteria. We've been going to sometimes capture the university halls, so off the city hall, but they're in the same room. Um so we've been doing those things and just sort of monitoring, cuz as we said, supervision as it's set. Is okay for the population there, but you know, sometimes we do have those kinds of people are out without or at least some substitute. And I know we've discussed um that Amy has the important part to secure those interns. Um you know, starting in spring semester, so hopefully this full conversation will sort of be moved by then. But um we are doing what we need to to keep an eye on and monitor. And in terms of instruction. We as a district will be completing a Holocaust survey. Um this is required by the state to tell, verify how we are um teaching Holocaust. Um so I'll be working with some of the social studies teachers who are in the district to fill that, it's a very deep survey. Um but one that must be completed by each district in New York State. Um we also will be completing a survey on how we are teaching civic readiness. So we have, um as you heard last meeting, Amy has um reached out to some of the town justices. And um is working on, you know, sort of bringing pieces of civic readiness into our students. And then also creating opportunities for our students to go out and experience um civics, right, in the community, so we're working on that. Um and that will be a work in progress forever, really, right? So there's always different opportunities for students to get involved, um so where we start now may look very different than what we report next year in the. Um we've been working with department meetings, administrators have been visiting. Um we have a pretty distinct structure for what we would like to accomplish throughout the year at our faculty meetings and department meetings. Um you know, I think we're trying to get away from, why have a meeting, it's to be a memo, and really use that time for professional. Growth and development of all of our folks in districts, so we've been doing some of that. As you know, we have new programs, um Orton Gillian Hand, which is um a program that focuses on teaching reading. And then we also have the Greek Math Program, so we work with teachers, um myself and Alicia. Worked with teachers on the Greek Math Program, Amy worked with Orton Gillian Hand, and there were similar um. Department meetings that happened at the secondary level as well, to some more goals. Um we've been engaging in administrative learning blocks, trying to go in teams of two, um part of the importance of going as teams. Um is that one of the things we want to do when we're looking at instruction is free entry to reliability. So you and I walk into um a classroom and may see very different things, but in terms of um. The coaching conversations that come after that, it's really important that we calibrate our um experience within that classroom setting. So that um regardless of what administrator walks into a classroom, we can still have productive conversations with folks. About, you know, sort of the um the highlights and things that, you know, can become goals to work on. So we all have room to grow, and it's just about having those conversations and being really positive that. If this is where we place our energy, um you know, really great things can happen in our classrooms. And Tom Lica shared that fifth grade took a trip to Meadowbrook Farms, and third grade also had a team building field trip to Thompson Pond. Which the students had a lot of fun. Um and then he also shared that our third and fifth years have resumed their regular trips to the Millbrook Library, so that's very exciting. Um as far as some operations gets, I have some um information from Ken. Regarding a transportation bit, so we have um. And this will be more in new business, but just to give you an overview, we have received word that um first student is not willing to extend. Our current contract, which means um that we will have to put it out to bid. Um so you do have a um resolution. For a transportation advisory services um report that's in there and a proposal from them. So essentially, what they do is that they will craft the bid on behalf of ourselves and the Dover School District. Um the Re-English District, we will bid together um for transportation services. So there is a cost estimate right now, Elliot. Um that we expect possible cost increases in the ten to twenty percent range. Um with no clear um number as to where that will be, but we did make sure that we had those numbers available for you. I asked Ken just to put it together, um because ten to ten to twenty percent of what, right? Has that number sound really different? Um so we gave you ten sixteen and twenty percent. Just to make sure that you had um that information available as to what we're looking at in terms of. Um you know, what we do for budget. Ken is working with Chris Prill, who is the business official in Dover, um. And they're really pushing this to move along, because they would like to have these numbers back as soon as possible. Um in the beginning of the new year, because obviously the sooner we have that information, the sooner we can cover our own budget. Um so that is why this is on the meeting tonight. Um I know I did mention it briefly, but the most important thing is to get that TAS proposal approved, so that we can move forward with their work and reading. Um what this bid will look like. Um I did want to say that uh you've heard for quite a few meetings now about um CBS WOW. Um so that is an organization that brings uh uh young adults with special needs into um the district to volunteer. So they started, um this is their second week, there's two different groups of individuals. Um small groups of about five that have been coming in. Last week was really more just in orientation, sort of where things are, how they can incorporate their work into the kitchen. And then um yesterday, I forgot what day it is, yesterday, um we had a group back. Who actually started to um work on uh food. So um I think they're really proud of the work and excited, some of the feedback's been really positive. Um so it it's been pretty awesome, and and we're really happy that we're working along with that. Um I do want to make the public plea, we are working to build custodial positions again. So um please, if you know anyone who's interested, um we have, you know, custodial positions that do a bunch of different things. Um so please, fire, we'd be happy to give you um information. Um we also, I wanted to highlight that we have posted the bids for construction manager and um financial advisor. Both of those are professional service bids, um so those are Ps are out there. And we'll be looking for that within the um near future, those are due to be returned November eighth. And and then an additional bit of information, our five-year lease agreement for our postage machine is um expiring. So our um current mailing history is approximately twelve thousand pieces per mail um a year. And our current quarterly cost to lease a postage machine is about nineteen hundred for the year. Um and the quarterly cost is about four eighty-five, essentially. Um and at this point, we're looking at a new lease agreement that will be about five twenty-five per quarter. With just over twenty-one hundred dollars for the um new year. So we are going to be bringing this forward in November for approval by the board. Um but just to give you some warning about what is about our postage machine. Um and I wanted to highlight some really exciting things that have been happening in the district, so we have Family University. Um last Tuesday, I believe it was, um it was posted by the middle school. Where they highlighted um some of the happening around the district in the SCL world. Their individual buildings were on social emotional learning, creating um an inclusive environment for students. And really supporting um, you know, middle school that a varied topic age for all students. So um they do some really great work, kind of rally around them and make them feel like they belong here in the building, so it was great to be able to highlight some of that work for the. Um on last Thursday, we presented at a community circle. Which um sort of gave the highlights and a rundown of our new math and literacy um approaches. And um both of those have been reported and are available for viewing after the fact. Which I think is important, because not everybody can make it at the time, but we did wanna make sure that we um continue to put information out there so that folks can benefit.
So that's on, I think, just in purpose, you can go on the website and find, or the school website.
Yes, so they will be posted for um for viewing, you know, we're going to be creating sort of that like blog style. That things will just live there, um and it's probably will be a little.
And that went out as an email to parents?
Yeah.
Uh like I honestly remember seeing something, I think, a while ago, and I did not.
It went out as an email, and then it um went out in my memo, I don't know what date it was, but.
Do you think you could um? I watched, I was six, so I watched both of them, and they were fabulous, and there's so much great information in there. That I think parents don't realize that they need to know. And so, do you think you could send, or someone, doesn't have to be you, another email out? This occurred, but if you missed it, the the recording is is here to you, because.
So I can paper link those into, in my next memo to the community, I can paper link, sort of like, here's where you can find it. Um and then they can go back um and also talk about whether there'll be um additional opportunities like that in the future. I think I would be turned out for them in person, um zero. But we did have folks who signed in online, um more for Family University than. Um and they really kind of appealed to different audiences um by design. The Family University is really supposed to be themed throughout this school year for social emotional learning. And Community Circle is really wanting to partner with parents around education, parents and community members, um around the different. Facts of education that are not, you know, just social. So, yeah, um and then um last Wednesday. Straight in my head, but last Wednesday, we had strategic planning, um so it was our first full day with our designing teams. And we worked with uh folks from Education Elements, they came here on campus. Um and we really did a lot of great work around um identifying what the actual steps will be. In order to reach our mission, vision, values, and to sort of create that as the environment of how we do business here. Um so the one thing that I will say is that we would love additional inputs. Um part of the process is to identify, like, if we do this, then this is the outcome we will have. And then being able to ask the question, how might we, right? So, um, sort of putting into action some ideas in terms of our approach to target those goals. And, um, we will be sending out opportunities for community members to provide their input. Um, because we do want a lot of input and then that will go back to the design team for them to really sort of, um, sculpt out what fits best, what feels best, um, for, you know, the strategic direction of the district. So there will be opportunities, if you have not participated thus far, there will be opportunities to that, so yeah.
Try to get a, a few more teachers and a few more students. But yeah, it was a great, great day, it was a good, good process to work through. Um, like, like you said, I, to me, I just want more.
Yeah, so we'll be highlighting that, um, we have a November freezer bulletin, um, that will go out, that will be highlighting strategic planning. Sort of how we're not where we currently are, um, some feedback from folks who were in the room that day. And then opportunities for this is how you can still participate if you have not yet. Um, we have a meeting of the Culture Committee tomorrow and the Wellness Committee on Thursday. Um, each of those meetings are three forty-five in the afternoon. And, um, if you go to the district website on the right-hand side where it says view, um, committee meetings and events, you will find the, um, Google Meet link to log in right there, everything is on one page. Um, we tried to make it super user-friendly for everyone, so they don't have to be finding different places, it's all on one sheet. Um, and then you can log in, um, to the Google Meet there, or you can come in person. Um, the little people did in room twenty-five of the middle school. On November seventeenth, at seven AM, we're trying to vary the times at which we're meeting and making ourselves available. Um, the administrative cabinet will be available for coffee. Um, we'll have coffee, you can bring your own coffee, there will be a hybrid link, um, if you are interested in having a conversation but can't necessarily make that time work, we will be available with a hybrid link, um, where you can log in remotely and just have a dialogue.
Did you say seven AM?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I'm like, great, did she say that?
I'm committed to it. I'm gonna be here. It's gonna be rough going, but we're gonna be here. We're really trying to make our films available at different times of the day, trying to appeal to all audiences.
Oh, I, that's, I wanna get my phone.
So, yeah, I'm more than welcome. And I did wanna also highlight that we have received a letter, um, to open negotiations with our administrative, um, class of bargaining unit. Um, so that will be coming forward soon. And just this past meet, we had, um, all four of our grants that are associated with, um, IDEI, which is Special Education, um, the Committee on Special Education and the Committee on Free School Special Education. All four of those grants have been approved. Um, at the time that I had created this memo, it was just one that had been approved. At this time, we received that, all four have been approved, so we'll have some money coming in, um, for that, which is really exciting. Additionally, we had, um, three MEF grants that were approved, um, so they will be coming forward for your information at the next meeting, so that's really exciting. Um, and we have additional MEF grants that are still in the So, we'd like to thank them for their continued partnership, that's really awesome.
The MEF negotiation, is that? Is that, do you already do? I mean, oh, geez, I thought we had another year.
Who's when they expire, so they requested. But not very.
No, I thought we had another year.
Yeah.
Alright.
You know, there was COVID. I hate everything. We all very.
Can you give an example, please, for what the Culture Committee and wrong with me to work on? And, um, is that so open, I'm just remembering when it first came out. I think there was like a time when they're going even doing, is it still open to anyone to attend and like, what are the goals of them?
So, I will speak to Culture first. Um, when we originally set out on that journey, there was one meeting. Um, that one meeting focused on the revision of the district board agenda. That was sort of a standalone project and has come to fruition. I feel like it's very important with any committee to be very clear, um, on the why, like, why are we gathering as this committee? Um, and I think that part of that is, is the work, right? So, coming together as a group of individuals to all have a common interest, hopefully, our children, right? Um, but then working together to define why are we here? And what, and, and then once we know our why, I think we can decide on what the, uh, what and how will be, right? Like, so why are we here? This is why, what are we gonna do? This is what we're gonna do, how are we gonna do it? This is how we're gonna do it. Um, and creating goals, like, sort of together. Um, the focus would be to improve the culture and climate of the district, right? Make it a happy place where kids wanna go to school, um, and I think that that is, that it's just work that needs to be done, but I think the specific and the direction needs to come from the people in that room. And wellness, um, is exactly what it sounds like, um, where we talk about all different facets of wellness. So we talk about opportunities for, um, kiddos to move more, opportunities for kiddos to learn about healthy nutrition. Um, part of it is the garden initiative, so in between the second and third course, um, on the parking lot side of the middle school, we have our garden. There's beautiful fresh vegetables there, um, all the time, and a lot of that work has been done by our students. Um, and also with some supportive parents as well, working with staff and district. So that's another thing, and then we talk about, you know, sort of the overarching SEL topics and then what do we wanna target next, in all facets of wellness. So, we've sort of had a little subcommittees, um, but it's a pretty large committee that's been working for a couple of years. And can anyone join? Thank you for, yeah. Yeah, absolutely. That's it.
Any other questions?
I think I had a question.
Thank you for having me.
I have to go back and look now. Oh, the transportation bid. Um, can we just, we have to discuss that? Yeah, okay, um, so Dover and Millbrook are pretty much in the same boat.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Alright. Alright, then, Alicia.
Yeah, so, um, Caroline has just mentioned, you know, having a happy place where kids can be excited to go to school. So I'd like to start by saying that, um, I spent the last, just over a month really being visible with staff, um, trying to be outside as much as possible, meeting families, parents. Um, really getting to know the students. So, uh, before I get into them, I just wanna say that, um, I, I love my building, they are incredible. Um, I'm so happy and blessed to go to work every day there. Um, I know that it's known, the staffing shortage when it comes to jobs and people being out for various things. So I think I've covered very many classrooms in different roles and, um, so it's very exciting when the kids come in and they are so excited for me to lead to them during library time, um, because that's something that I miss most about the classroom, so, um, I'm really enjoying that and the relationship that I built. So, um, that being said, as far as curriculum, we have worked on, continuing work on Born Healing Ham, Eureka, we have an individual from, um, the Center for Professional Learning who's come in to work primarily with our pre-K groups and our second grade teams on writing. Um, the, uh, second grade team of pre-K teachers are very excited for the work and, um, being done and the goals were made will be. Um, the beginning of the year, uh, benchmarks have been done. And the team time is being spent for teachers to, uh, really go over the data, um, from any records and then, um, their progress monitor and just all the data things that we've got so far to begin our reading cycles. So that just began, which is their what I need time. So, um, it's pretty about their what I need time, in fact, it's not just, um, a time for renovation. It can be time for, um, extension activities or enrichment activities, um, as well as any kind of renovation or support that we need, so that cycle has just begun. Um, we have, I've been working with the pre-K team to update their report card to reflect the, um, literacy, pre-K standards. Um, and I think that you'll be really happy with some of the work that that, that you'll see with that. Um, we have just established our Elm Drive ruler, SCL team. And, um, we'll be meeting weekly, it actually just got done, uh, this week. Because each year, there may be different members, but thankfully, we have a lot of volunteers. And we're really excited to get this going at Elm Drive. Um, that being said, I've worked really closely with the other building leaders to ensure that we have a lot of vertical alignment with ruler. And some great exciting ideas that we've been talking about, um, having that positive culture climate within the school is one of my biggest goals as a leader. Um, I'm very, very in tune to social emotional learning, so I'm very excited about this. And I've talked about bringing back, um, monthly character training assemblies, but I'm working with the building principals to try and get where it's staged well and have those character traits really reflect, um, our vision as a school district and the effort that we have in our strategic planning. Um, so I, I really welcome going back to having families coming and having, we talked about this idea of having like our blue ribbon laser that we then, um, we've gotten some great feedback on that. But we just wanna make sure that when it's rolled out, it's done, not just at Elm Drive, but, you know, across the district in one, a meaningful way. Um, speaking on the instruction on the Holocaust that, um, Caroline was also mentioning before, I've worked to get, um, the teachers in creating age-appropriate, um, Holocaust instruction. Um, they've shared with me, I shared with them some resources, they shared with me some ideas and, you know, very age-appropriate and just, for example, the first grade team is doing lessons using, um, speeches, Starville speeches, you know, Dr. Seuss. So, that's exciting. We also have, um, a section in our library where there are books on display that we have. And the librarian who's spoken is going to be interviewing books from the Millbrook Library tomorrow to kind of display. Um, and just have different things available to the students. Um, it's Fire Prevention Month, the kids are really excited tomorrow, we actually have and, um, so I'm hoping that the weather is nice, um, but they've done a lot of classroom activities on the importance of firefighters and other community heroes and, um, what they do in the community, the pre-k, it's a community walk and they run by the fire station and, um, I'll be excited to see the little guys walking around their little fire helmet. For conduct and safety, we have completed many trails today. Um, I'm extremely proud of how quickly our fire drills have, they've gotten a lot faster. Be, in the beginning with our little guys, um, it took a little too long to get them out, but they practiced on their own using fast feet. And, um, they did some great work in, in really getting that time down and, um, I'm very impressed and, and actually, they, since day one, they've taken it very seriously, which is amazing to look at these pre-k as being so serious, um, and, uh, very quiet, very, like, all straight lines when they're outside, so to the pre-k teachers, because they definitely, um, had that conversation with them. Um, we have a safety training with Frank and Gary on Friday for myself, um, with the other new administrators, I have some new safety team members on my team. So thankfully, um, he's moving up on Friday to work with us. Um, something that I didn't put on here, but I thought about when we were, something else came up. Um, I've also been working with staff as far as like safety, um, involving data collection, using school tool and really ensuring that those things are documented. Um, not only for, um, not only for offenders, but for the victims as well, because it's important that we're really um, having that documentation there, because as we go toward, um, the code of conduct where, you know, conversations around, um, how do we, how do we count how many verbal warnings someone has? How do we know how many times we've, like, spoken to? So, really get away from, you know, it's great that teachers keep law, but like parent contact. But unfortunately, those papers don't always go here to here, so it's important that they can shoot to do that. But then it's also documented, not in the discipline section, but in notes section in our school information system that way. Um, it, it's a way to track it and it goes on. So, um, I'm actually going to be working with, um, the Alden M and Allen staffs during our next faculty meeting to do a big presentation on that, but I've been doing it myself with some of the teams if I can meeting with them. So, I'm glad to see that that's been, um, made. Some special highlights, I talked about the pre-k community walk and that was great because that was also something that, um, you know, that would be a purposeful play, um, curriculum, not curriculum, but, um, we're trying to get more purposeful play within pre-k. So, they were talking about, you know, going out in this curriculum walk, taking pictures of the community and then using those pictures to do lessons within the classroom that were more meaningful, um, utilizing like the kitchen area for restaurants that they took pictures of and so on. Um, something that I haven't discussed yet, yeah, but I've been working with Dr. Watkins on is um, trying to get quotes for sensory wall, a sensory wall, which is just a fun colorful pathway where it extends, um, you know, use their motor skills, balance, um, coordination, spatial awareness, um, that's something that I got in previous districts of mine and it's that all of the kids will benefit. So, um, I'm excited to get some quotes for that and then after we write some comments, yeah. Um, we have our mystery, mystery readers that, um, and the kids are very excited for that. And actually, Thursday, the kindergarten takes a field trip to, um, um, oh, and I almost skipped over the really fun thing. So, the pre-k is enjoying the new playground and Elliot has some fun, um, visuals to share. So, um, now that they've been, um, enjoying that, because the kids have different grade level reset time, we are able to now open that up to some of the other level, which will be and then I had to test it. To make sure that it was safe for, you know, so, um, I volunteered myself, um, had to survive.
At least that sensory wall, is that inside or outside?
So, actually, um, it's both, so the, so there's, um, there are great decals that can be put inside and then they can be boxed over, so they're there. Um, you see it on walls that, I mean, not just, I mean, throughout the building on both ends. I can picture it just being there where they have like faces where it should be, they're gonna do wall push-ups. And then they have like frog jumps and, um, um, a whole bunch of different, different things. But then also, um, there are stencil kits that you can purchase for outside. So on the laptop, you can have different things there, you can do like, um, I mean, those, those things, but outside in different ways. And the great thing about that is it can be used within other buildings to put it on a license that's bought. So, um, I'm thinking like between Elm and Alden, um, but also those are just great things like PE. There, there's just so many different things that you can have, so, um, I'm really excited. And then, um, there's some upcoming events, one of the other goals of mine was to really bring back a lot of um, activities that were kind of put on pause from the pandemic. So, we will be having our Halloween parade, um, around Elm Night Freer and, um, Mr. Witt will be coming to help us with that, so we'll be at ten AM and it will be the same as last year where it was behind the tall and, um, down. I'm, I, I'm still here with the pre K. You know, like there and then back on the other. Yeah, I know, I know the name. Um, yeah, so they'll be going around and back inside. Um, again, this time we have our touchy track, so that's exciting. We have our parent teacher conferences. Um, Mr. Russell is super excited to bring back the eighteenth annual snowflake run. So I'm really excited to see that. And I will be meeting with you tomorrow to actually um go over some different ideas for a November family event. We kind of threw out there some kind of like multicultural event, um, like control of the pop-up, um, something, something.
Do um, I, I'm talking about when my daughter was there a while ago, do the parents get to go to the like touchy track or the snowflake run or anything? I know with COVID, we were getting away from a lot of that stuff. I didn't know if that was brought back.
Yeah, so um, I did send out a blackboard message to all the families, um, letting them know about Halloween. You know, the spectators for that, they'll obviously be like into the um family events. The touchy chuck wasn't something that we had the family come to the time. I'm honestly not sure if that was something in the past, but um the uh, snowflake run parents will be invited. So, yeah.
And thank you for sending that out.
Yes.
That wasn't always done.
Yeah. And we have a, we have a uh makeup date too. Dustin Hayes, there's like a delay where it's everything off. We already pre-planned the next day to be makeup, which is why this is on a Tuesday, so that we still have that Wednesday um, for a makeup date and then Thursday when all of the classes kind of do their celebration. So I didn't want to
I want to say thank you. My kiddo really enjoyed the community walk. We were driving around, oh, that's the big high pass. I really enjoyed the playground. Uh, but thank you. Um, in regards to upcoming events, so prior to COVID and it stopped because of COVID, there was the Abla program where parents could drop their kids off once a week before school uh and two teachers from the Abla teach them Spanish and it seemed to be something that really set our school apart. Um, and because of COVID, they had to stop it. The teachers were wonderful. It was a pretty good turnout for who was in the program dropping off early. And it didn't run all school year. I think it was for about half of the school year. Um, so I wanted to know if that was a moving thing back.
I can absolutely look into that. Um, this is
immunity. I can be honest with you that I'm not even sure they're still in the, yeah, unfortunately, because I have looked about to send information to someone. I'll look again, but I, and I will also reach out to them via email and see if there's. But yeah.
Was that only at Elm or was it also Alden? Okay, and if they're no longer in existence, other people teach Spanish, right? So can we look into a different?
Yeah, I mean, I think that the, the, they were pretty ideal because they had a program doing this with youngsters.
Sure.
Um, so this was something that, you know, it was like the immigrant leaders for little little folks. Um, I don't know how many folks are available at those times because if they are teachers, maybe some retired teachers would be the kind. But if they are teachers, they're probably heading into their teaching job. So this was very convenient because, you know, that was kind of one of the programs that they offer by design. So hopefully we can find another member if we're not.
Right.
Thanks. Just one more thing to add. Um, I know Caroline also mentioned mentors from you had many. Um, which I think would be great, but I do want to give a shout out to all of the administrators here because they have been so welcoming and supportive and I am never nervous to ask questions and they share everything and an amazing team.
So Alicia, specific, we've had this ongoing issue with Elm, the traffic. I know we, we sent uh, Mike got involved. Um, we're gonna talk to Jared, right? He did. Um, how's it going?
So I will say that um, the so I know Mike did meet with a couple of the individuals on the tree and um they were productive conversation. I know he's really done so much to try and look into, really to correct this and just kind of intervene and support in any way that he can. Um, also I did a meeting with Elliot and a couple of the architects and we talked about, you know, having a little best fuel and the road to kind of alleviate that, eliminate that um concern, but unfortunately, right now, all we can do is try and get the kick out as quickly as possible. Um, I will say that the teaching assistants and these that are out there are, I, I don't even know how they do it. They are so quick and so, it's, it's like a well-oiled machine and they timed it and it took seven minutes and forty seven seconds to get all the parents picked up out to their cars. Seven minutes and forty seven seconds. I mean, we're, they're just to throw it out there that um we are aware, we are trying our very best.
Well, and, and I'm not in any way suggesting you guys become traffic cops. I mean, it hopefully between the village, the law enforcement, we can find a way to put up signs that say, do not block driveways. If God forbid, but maybe it, it ends up handing out a few tickets like the, the stoplights on the buses now. Um, and maybe that is, but if worse comes to worst, we'll have to look at it as we take the capital project forward. Uh, but you know, if you start to see things getting out of hand, just make sure Caroline knows, make sure I know, so that we can, you know, if we have to go to the village and ask them to cover that street twice a day or something, I don't know.
Also, um, I am out there for drop off and pickup. I try and be out there as often as possible and um I will take a mental note to try and place myself down on the road so that I can try and
I just, again.
I'll make a sign and everything.
The last thing I want, personally want is you ending up, you know, out there yelling at somebody to get, cause they're parked in somebody's driveway. That is not your job. It's not our job. But we can do whatever we can to, you know, to make that flow better.
I wanted to add something just from another person. I think that's all very much needed and I understand that um there's a lot worse, I guess, if you consider that. Um, thinking from the other side, it seems a lot of people are doing parent pickup and drop off this year, meaning because we have the best experience with our students last year. And so that's why so many of these youngsters are being picked up and dropped off and if we can maybe do something to kind of restore the speed, whether it's bid or for a student, um, just in the other end, that we might have less traffic and less students being picked up and walked off.
I think that pre K also added, I mean, a lot of the pre K, I think with me, it would, that would be the way I would think about it is I'm not sure I want to put my four-year-old on a bus or, you know, I guess they can be three-year-olds. So, I mean, I, I can see that being a problem, but there are other ways and, you know, as with everything else, it's a matter of months. Um, but I think we can, the things that, at least from what I've heard, things have improved pretty well. Um, but we need to keep the focus on it. And then if we have to, you know, find an alternate way to bring traffic through that parking lot. I hate to do that because I hate to lose more of that long, but anyway, um, any other questions for Alicia? Uh, nevermind. All right, uh, we're going over this home, which one's the bus? Yeah, I was gonna, yeah. Does anybody have a problem if I move the question to the public? I, I have no. No, I, I mean, I think this first student thing is gonna take us quite a while, so if nobody has any problem.
So um, I have some concerns about the gazebo. And uh, my question to you is, I was just wondering, walking my dogs there early in the morning, you know, around quarter to nine, again around the afternoon. Noticed the traffic, um, it's particularly busy and then um coming from Maple down Elm. The posted speed limit is fifteen, some drivers observe it, some drivers are still. And I was wondering with the gazebo, will you conduct any sort of safety or traffic study, given that it's five to five o'clock and jump? It's no longer on a big open field that's surrounded by traffic.
It, it, in all honesty, that's one of the things, I mean, we talked about it, but how do we make that a useful part of the district? But not just that, you know, Elm Drive going around and Maple coming around, but then you've got that road that cuts through. You've got the village garage over on the side. Um, it, it's going to, it's, it's gonna be a challenge for us to figure out. You know, understand the historical significance, but investing in things that really don't fit, I, I don't know how we do that.
So we, we um, I don't think we intend to, I think we both felt a little help responding to some of the presentation, which I actually learned. I had no idea this was about millionaires.
That you all own the team.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, uh, but um, you know, I think we are clearly, it is absolutely true that we're all aligned in the same structure, you know, some of you all are too. But I don't think it's accurate to say that, that we all agree on how to go about it. I believe that you mentioned moving it. Um, I, I think renovating this structure on a piece of school structure on a school property is just not safe enough to be used by the kids. I mean, your call obviously, but I can't imagine how that works, but um, you know, we are renovating two historic areas in Newark right now. Um, I've been talking to the people at the Bennett College and we're here on the chairs and college, the Bennett's. He envisions that gazebo at the end of a long stone wall that is the old Helsian Mall. He said in his words, the turnus of that, of that wall, which I just found out is by the same architect could be, um, which is kind of, you know, it's kind of a nice symmetry there. That to me is a much better, it'll get used, it's not gonna get used sitting in this corner. So, so I, I've been speaking to the um save the gazebo people. Um, you can hear they're very nostalgic. You know, that's been many decades since it looked like that, many decades since it all looked like a baseball field. Um, and I think the reality of where we are dictates another solution. Um, but we don't have to lose the building. So anyway, we're, we're very much in difference, we're very much in difference moving it. And let me tell you, we're so happy to be in there. We moved back, we moved out from the country and uh, we are to see the kids playing. And you hear that every day, it's like, we love it.
Oh, that's cool. Very nice. Thank you. Yeah, and like I said, I mean, I know the traffic there is, is an issue. Uh, I mean, the traffic in our parking lot is an issue, just trying to get around that circle without sides wiping bars and um, it's, it's an issue that we need to address and we can't do it by ourselves. That's the other sort of piece of it, so stay tuned.
Thank you.
So do we have any questions from that? All right. All right. Financials and warrants. First year? Yeah, I was going financial warrant. Uh, do I have a motion to adopt the uh, the financials and warrants?
So much.
Do I have a second? Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Any against? Um, do I have a motion to say happy birthday to Cheryl? Uh, oh no, that's not.
Is it your birthday?
Happy twenty fifth birthday. All right, so can we talk about this in public session? Or do we have to go to executive, the uh, transportation?
Already did this properly, open meeting and part of the disrepair for you.
Oh, we already talked about.
And we need to issue that is open. Any other questions related about the reason for a case of death? And happy birthday.
I'm just, I don't know where the cake is.
She told me I have a knife.
What I was saying is we had a conversation about, is that enough to cover in public or? I don't know. Is there something that we didn't cover earlier when we were talking about it? Okay, well, why don't you give us the public part of it and then?
We need to issue our. So you talked about that. I can't imagine there's anything else that needs to be discussed in the whole profession.
Well, that was clear. Uh, nothing rude questions in the public board policy committee?
They're making good progress. I think we've seen policies come through on a regular basis. It's uh, it's been a while. More than lost the same time. Especially thousand, nine thousands growing, so.
I mean, I don't know, it, this is one of those things that has been going on for fifteen years now.
Does it ever like end?
It started, originally they opened, I think they opened in the nineties.
I don't imagine it ends. I hope it becomes more targeted though. Once we roll through all of this, it's a crisis.
No, what happens is according to your previous person who dedicated their life and soul to doing the policy. Once you complete it, you go back and review everything all over again because this changes to S E D that that you can be tweeted.
Trying to scare him away? This is one of those committees where once you're on, you cannot.
Howard was on his team.
Yeah.
Was, was your degree word?
But he couldn't mask it. All right. Um, so we'll come back to that, um, board policy, district safety committee?
But in the last week, so Tuesday, I think. Um, we just asked old for the year picking up um from where we left off last year, so um, we will be re-communicating our threat assessment teams and having a threat assessment with pressure. So our buildings each have teams of folks who are trained in threat assessment, risk assessment, um, and conducting suicide assessments. Um, we also will be, in addition to doing a refresher, we'll be doing a refresher on reunification. Um, reunification is anytime we have to pair with their appropriate familial adult um, in order to dismiss typically it's after, you know, a reason why we can't dismiss typically. Um, so it could be an early dismissal from an event or something like that. Um, you know, in any situation, um, our goal would always be to try and dismiss the typical fashion students dismiss, but when that's not possible, um, we would have to use a reunification drill. It was a drill that was um fully executed with um, I believe it was the seventh grade class, what in year at the middle school. And so we were able to do that, that's a run through the exercise, so folks actually had um, experience in what it would look like on a smaller scale. Um, part of what we do with all of the incident command system on the safety team is try to use exercises that are scalable. So if this system works with just the seventh grade, it should be available for work with an entire building or multiple buildings if we needed to. So the practice is the same. So the practice is the same. It's the volume of folks that we would release in that way. So we made the goal, one of our goals is that every building will execute a reunification exercise as a drill from some event. So we talked about, you know, it could be a dance, it could be something like that, that they would actually walk through the steps of the reunification. Because I think it was such an educational opportunity for the folks who did it. It wasn't just the middle school staff. They actually have high school staff come over as well. But either way, they were able to learn something that in theory sounded great, but wouldn't actually go to walk through it. It doesn't always work that way. And we never want those discoveries to happen during an actual incident. So anytime you can practice this, you know, we practice new things that hopefully never actually have to use them, right? So, yeah, so that's the reality. And then as Alicia had mentioned, Frank and folks from regional PP will be providing more in-depth training. We do have the overview training every year, but they'll be providing more in-depth training for new administration and so that's coming up on this.
And is, at some point, is somebody going to go through? I, I don't even know how to put this in the right terms, but this is getting ridiculous. I mean, every week, there's another shooter. And, and, you know, I, has somebody, is there somebody that can go through it and go, you know, you're, you're in good shape, but you had another SRO in here, you'd be in much better shape. I mean, the, watching the videos this week, there was like seven safety officers on premise that were all going over the fence into that school. I mean, I, I don't want to see us having ten-foot-high chain link fences with, you know, guards all over the place, but this stuff is starting to, it's just scared the crap out of me.
Oh, I think there's something we probably wouldn't want to talk about in public session. You know, we look at, we look at CP from multiple perspectives. The one most basic, fundamental, and yet most costly is hardening the target. The other is the training. So Elliot and I just had a meeting today with Dale Automation. They're, you know, one of many vendors that do some of the hardening the target parts. So we're always looking for leaving which we can improve. But, you know, no matter what physical infrastructure changes, improvements we put in place, we're always going to be relying on humans, right, to execute their role in keeping a safety building. So, you know, we can talk more about that. I mean, that session is an ongoing dialogue at all times.
If we do want to talk about that, then exactly should have an additional reason, matters which may imperil the public safety that just.
All right. Thank you, Carolyn. Enrollment report for your entertainment. Yes, I are. That's there as well for your, doing, doing anything from PTO.
Yeah. So there's a district-wide group fundraiser that is going out this week. It is pricier than your local grocery store, but it's probably the best group you ever ordered. Second, I have been working very closely with Mr. Lipco to bring an SEL program from our family beloved karate school that, the instructors are martial arts therapists and do SEL programs in various schools. And so we're working on having them come in to do a presentation for all the grades that have all been in November.
Any questions? All right. MEF report?
Sure. So we have two new board members on MEF and we still have room for a few more. So if anyone knows anybody who might be interested. And then, of course, we will, we'll, I'll get to Taste Millbrook a little bit later, which people don't have time to join the board, but they still want to help in some way. Then we are, I guess I'll just skip to it now. It's not in right order. They, we are expecting to have our in-person Taste of Millbrook in 2023, but we've shifted it instead of holding it in June as not to compete with other sort of galas now that would have a lot of the same sponsors and participants. We're shifting to fall of 2023. So we're going to try that out in September twenty-three, September twenty-third, twenty-three. So information will be going out. So even if individuals don't have, you know, are thinking, oh, well, I'd like to help, but I don't have time to be a board member. They can still help us on that day and the weeks leading up to it, even including high school students. So where to come from that and our annual appeal, those letters will be going out in the second half of November. So everybody can check their mail. And then as Caroline mentioned, I think at our, my next reporting, you'll get very specific information about the grants, but we had five or, five or six rolled in to us. And at this time, we fully approved three of them. And then I, I think there's just some additional information needed on a couple others. But yeah, we're excited to do that.
That should be pretty cool in the fall. I mean, that'd be beautiful views up there.
Right.
Any questions for Chris? All right. Future agenda items, whenever, anytime, just let me know. So do I have a motion to go to executive session or to discuss the employment history of a particular person? The future employment of a particular person and the health and safety of the public as an entity? What she said? Do I have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any against? Five minutes.
You rang the gavel when you seen that, Mr. Van.